Okay, let's go ahead and get started with the November 2nd City Council Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Mayor Lundberg?
Here. Just a housekeeping thing, Councilmember Fish is attending via conference call, so we will call the roll on every one of our votes tonight. That, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
First one I screwed up. Councilmember Fish, don't just vote nay, say something right away and slap me or something. Say, hey Lundberg, Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
About this.
Now you're not paying attention. It's back on you.
It's cutting in and out. It's cutting in and out for me.
Just say aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries. I apologize. We have three sets of minutes from October 15th, 19th, and 22nd. I have a motion to approve those three sets.
Motion approved.
Motion is second to approve three sets of minutes from 15th, 19th, and 22nd. Any questions? Christina, can you call the roll?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have bills and claims submitted with the agenda totaling eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and twelve cent, twelve cents. Again, have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion is second to approve the bills and claims. Any questions from council members? Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carried. Now is the time, anybody wishing to address the council may do so. Any public comments? Do so at this time? Sir?
Oh, push it back. There you go.
All right.
There you go.
Scott Russ, 205 Augusta Avenue in Brandon. Hey, I saw that you guys were bringing up the management RFP tonight. Saw the RFP and the agenda. I was the guy that drafted the original one for the City of Sioux Falls and helped negotiate that contract. Just wanted to throw it out there, if you had any questions tonight, I was going to be here for the meeting, so I thought I would go ahead and let you know that I'm here. And if you guys needed any help or had any questions on what Sioux Falls went through with this process, feel free to ask me.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Very nice job on writing the spec. We appreciate that. I would imagine that it's very similar.
Possibly.
No comment on that. Thank you, Scott.
I didn't see a copyright on it. Hey, we don't have any copyright.
Right, why reinvent the wheel? Anyone else? We have a public hearing on retail wine and cider license for Wild Prairie Winery to serve samples at the Farmer's Market on 11-7-12-5-1-2-2-6-3-6-4-3-5-1. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the wine and cider license for Wild Prairie Winery on the dates that I listed. Any questions from the council? Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have a storm water study report from Infrastructure Design Group.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to present on Brandon's citywide drainage planning process that we did. My name's Chad Anish. I'm with Infrastructure Design Group. With me, I have Kevin Smith with AE2S and John Jacobson with Confluence. So you guys are in for a treat. You have an engineer, a planner, and a landscape architect.
I feel like I should grab my billfold.
Yeah, there you go. No.
I have a tight control on it here, so go ahead and proceed.
All right. So I'm here to present on that citywide drainage planning that we were working on, working on. It's a large document. There's a lot to it. We won't go into all the details of it, just highlight some of the key elements. So we're going to talk about the capital plan process of it, some of the drainage review policies and ordinances that we looked at, MS4 readiness, low-impact development, and the utility rate portion of it. So the capital plan itself, really, you know, the backbone of a lot of the planning document, it's the initial steps. That involves a lot of data collection and review. You guys are going through capital planning processes right now with all your different departments, and so you realize how important this is. The data collection and the review is, like I said, one of those key first steps, just gathering all the data that either the city already has, whether it's, you know, past issues, drainage-related issues, GIS, whatever it is, past reports that have been done, studies that have been done. And then probably one of the more key elements is the public input. Public input and also the different departments, you know, we talked to all the different departments and city staff because we got to find out just what are all the drainage issues out there right now. That's the first step in it. From there, you know, we can identify that list and then just start working on prioritizing different issues. So what's up there on the screen, might be difficult to see, but we did do various surveys. That's indicating a survey that was online, various questions, mostly, I mean, they're focused on drainage. What kind of drainage issues do you see? Do you have a sump pump? Does it run a lot? Various questions like that. And there was a GIS integration component to it where they could go online, click where the issue was, upload pictures if they had them, make a comment. So all of that information is in the planning document for review, comments, everything. So that was just part of developing that list. I should, part of that public input, we also piggybacked on the public meetings that the core area drainage improvements had. Also attended a Biz Bash with a booth, really pushing the surveys out there to get as much input as we could. Part of, part of the process, we also had included that as we go through and identify some of these basins that have a lot of issues, that we'd actually study one of those basins and provide recommendations for improvements. So what's up there right now is the Trob Edition Industrial Park area. So there's, on the larger rain events, there's a lot of localized flooding that happens kind of in that one block area of Split Rock Boulevard and Redwood Boulevard. So we did a drainage analysis of that area, and then when you're doing those drainage analysis, it's what isn't meeting design criteria right now. We want to try and get it up to current design criteria. So modeling different alternatives to accomplish design criteria. So again, that full study, recommendations, alternatives are all in the planning document also. Like I said, the backbone is that CIP list, really just getting a list of all those different projects, issues that everybody identified, both within the department meetings and the public input session, public meetings. This is just, so this is a lot easier to read in the document itself. This is just one of three pages of projects that were identified. Some projects, some actually studies, so similar to that industrial park, Trob Edition area. There's specific issues that were identified as drainage-related issues, but there's not necessarily a particular project that can be done until you study it, you know, find out what the issue are, issues are, and what needs to happen to bring it up to current design standards. So some of those issues that were identified either by staff or by the public are identified as an additional study to really delve into it a little bit more. But like I said, there's three pages of projects or studies, and if you tally all those up, it's about fifteen million dollars. Now, that's not to say that you need to go and accomplish all fifteen million right away. What the CIP does, and you guys know this by going through the process for some of your other departments and assets, is part of it, it's a gut check. You get all these lists of projects, all these issues identified. You get them on paper and realize that there's a lot there. But again, you don't have to accomplish that, you know, in three years, five years. The next step is to start prioritizing projects based on high priority levels and what you can accomplish each year. So that's really the next step of the CIP list is to prioritize that. We did create a prioritization matrix as part of the process that you can utilize throughout all of your CIP, not just the drainage CIP. And I should back up and highlight, you know, City of Brandon is not unique in going through this process. If you kind of step back in the evolution of communities, you know, I do a lot of consulting for City of Garrettson. That's a thousand to twelve-hundred people. So they don't have a lot of drainage issues, but as they grow, drainage issues become more prevalent. That's just how, that just happens. That's normal for communities. What changes over that process is communities start realizing that the drainage system is really no different than the water system or their sanitary sewer system. It's an asset that needs to be maintained. You have to put investments towards it. You have to have planning for future development. Design standards come about over that process also. So all that just really creates drainage systems as a separate utility, just like water and sanitary sewer. So, and that's kind of changes over time with these communities as they grow. Another aspect that we did through this process is just review all the different design standards and the policies, make reviews and updates to those. A lot of these were being incorporated as we identified them. So Tammy and the rest of the staff, they started incorporating some of these recommendations right away. The process, that flow chart, we developed that. That's basically just there for development submittal process. You guys had that in place. I'm not sure that it was always being utilized or adhered to or totally understood by everybody. And so this is really a visual depiction of, there is a set process, and it probably also helps for developers that come in and are going to develop to really identify that this isn't going to happen in two weeks. There's, there's some steps here, some submittals that need to happen, and that you should plan accordingly. The checklist, they're on the right side. That's just one of eleven pages of a checklist, and it really is pretty comprehensive for all of your different design standards or ordinances in place related to drainage. And it is a living document for each submittal that comes in. So it has a column there for a concept submittal, column for a preliminary submittal, and your engineering documents for construction. And what's good about this checklist is it's not only really good for city staff when they're going through and making sure that all of the plans meet the requirements, but there's also signature blocks in there for the developer and the developer's engineer that they acknowledge that they've went through this checklist. And so if they're acknowledging it and going through the checklist, by the time it gets to city staff, they really should have addressed all of the requirements. So that's, that's the history on the policies, the ordinances, capital plan. Now looking forward into low-impact development, some of those MS4 requirements. I'll have John talk about the LID components.
Thanks. Good evening, Council John Jacobson with Confluence. So I'm going to just spend a few minutes here talking about the low-impact development portion of this. And so I know that I was in front of council here a number of months ago, and since then, we've had a few new members join. So just want to quickly touch on what LID is. So that's a catch-all term for things like sustainable development, green design, zero escaping, those kind of things. They all fall into this particular category. So we look at this as a way to, you know, when we're planning and designing, to kind of mimic natural approaches to design. So by that, obviously, we have a community that has a significant amount of pervious or impervious areas, roofs, roads, sidewalks, all that stuff that causes the runoff that the city needs to be able to begin to address. So our key through LID is to be able to treat that water before it even gets into the storm sewer system and eventually makes it to our rivers and lakes. So you can think of it as kind of a sensitive design that allows for pretreatment of the water and even possibly putting it back into the subsurface before it even hits our infrastructure. So in a way, incorporating these types of elements allows infrastructure costs to be lowered. So your storm sewer pipes, things like roadway wits, those, all those kind of things can be reduced in a low-impact type development situation. So, and obviously, those have a lot of positive environmental effects because it even deals with everything right down to landscaping, ground covers. You know, we've talked about turf grass before. If you're able to reduce, you know, twenty-five, thirty percent of the turf grass throughout the community, you're reducing those inputs and energy it takes to take care of those things. So a few examples on here from the report, those might be things as small as residential rain gardens, bigger infiltration basins, green roofs. I mentioned road design, pervious pavements, kind of green areas as far as taking out turf grass, those kind of things. So those are all elements that work together for low-impact development. So as part of the report, we've identified eighteen kind of LID-specific projects. Some of those projects are incorporated in your current projects like the Core Reconstruction Project or the Rushmore Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. So I think that's a very important point to kind of stress that low-impact development isn't kind of a self-single-type project, right? It's looking for opportunities within existing projects to incorporate these particular concepts. So a number of these within the overall plan have illustrations to kind of drive at what we're getting at and can be done and are incorporated in the overall estimate. So the last thing I just wanted to touch on is, as Chad already mentioned, with some of the design reviews and guidelines for drainage design within the community, we've already incorporated a number of LID concepts into some of the existing city projects. And two of those are under construction right now or are just finishing up. The first one was kind of the infiltration trench and stabilization in the tall grass development to deal with runoff coming off that development. And then also, two very large infiltration basins that we did as part of the first phase of the core project along the railroad right-of-way, kind of by the street department there. There's a lot of neighborhood runoff that goes into that railroad right-of-way ditch, and we're able to intercept that in those infiltration basins so that it doesn't continue to go over ground, but actually gets sucked into the ground through the design that you kind of see under construction there. That way, a lot of the contaminants and things that are in the water get sucked in by those plants and that basin, and the water that eventually makes its way out of there is cleaner and/or just goes directly into the subsurface. So now, Kevin Smith from AE2S is going to take over and talk about MS4 readiness.
Thanks, John. An element of the, of the study was also to take a look at the future, not just in terms of infrastructure needs, but really, I think more on the administrative end of managing what the federal government refers to as a municipal separate storm sewer system or an MS4. And loosely defined, I'm not going to read through that, but it is everything you own that is related to the storm drainage system. So every inlet, every detention pond, every drainage way, even sections of streets are considered part of that, that MS4, your, your storm drainage system. So when you hear the term MS4, it really is founded in, in the background from Congress. And Congress amended the Clean Water Act in 1987 to establish their comprehensive storm water management program, the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, solely to protect our natural waters of the country. Let's keep pollutants out of those waterways. In 1990, Phase One of the regulations were authorized, Phase One communities are communities with populations of a hundred thousand or more. That included City of Sioux Falls at the time. 1999, Phase Two regulations were authorized. That's where it impacts communities like Brandon. The magic number is ten thousand in population. So that last bullet point where you see the question marks, Brandon is not an MS4 community yet until the 2020 census figures will probably show that we're over ten thousand. But again, an element of the study was to help city staff prepare for the future because these, these standards are coming. That it's, you know, we don't want to wait until we hear from DE, from the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, oh, you're ten thousand, now it's time to implement MS4. An element of the, of the study was, here's some things you need to prepare for. Here's some potential minimum control measures that we as a community are going to have to address. So these six minimum control measures include public education, illicit discharge detection, like having a hotline for, for residents to call the city and say, hey, I just saw somebody dumping a gallon of paint down a storm drain. Somebody should do something about that. These are very real things that do affect the environment, things that the City of Brandon will have to put in place when we do become an MS4 community. Construction site stormwater runoff control, having, making sure you have a, a set program for erosion and sediment control. Making sure that as development areas are being graded, that when it rains, you don't have massive amounts of soil going into the storm drain system and into the river because sediment is considered a pollutant. Post-construction stormwater management, what are you doing after construction? Making sure development is done in an environmentally protective way. So some of the things John just talked about, low-impact design, the city is already on the path of doing some of these things, which is great. But again, these, these requirements are going to be placed on us once we have ten thousand in population. And we do need, I'm going to go one more. What else do we need to do? We need to have best management practices on how those standards are being implemented. So stormwater management plan that the state of South Dakota reviews, along with measurable goals and, and best management practices. An appendix, an appendix to the report includes about, I think it's eighteen, eighteen different recommendations of things that, that Brandon can do that other communities our size have done successfully, whether it's, you know, stream cleanup activities or having public events where we bring the public in and just talk to them about the importance of protecting the Big Sioux River and, and its tributaries. Annual, there's a, annually, there will be a report that's sent to the DENR so they can review our, our standards. But again, those are a lot of administrative items which can probably result in or require additional resources to be in the field, whether that's additional street sweeping because street sweeping is considered a protective measure for storm drainage because you're keeping sediment off the roads, out of the drainage ways, out of the river. But we wanted to make sure that the city understands, these are some things that, that we all need to be part of. And, you know, hopefully, you get an opportunity to read through the appendix and look at some of those control measures and best management practices. And Chad earlier talked about the fifteen million dollars in capital improvements. There's also ongoing operation and maintenance costs, just like you have with your water and wastewater systems. Storm drainage systems are really considered as utilities, that they have very distinct requirements for construction, for operation, for maintenance. So those costs, typically, other communities have created stormwater utilities. They collect fees. The fees go towards those utilities, just like your water rates go towards water projects, wastewater rates go towards wastewater projects. And when we're asked, why, why do communities really consider creating stormwater utilities? It's for those five things that you see in front of you. It's, it begins with equity, fairness. Those that impact the storm drainage system, large properties with a lot of impervious area that create a lot of runoff, have a greater impact than single-family residences where they have less impervious area or area, land that, that, you know, doesn't allow the water to infiltrate. And we've already talked about operation and maintenance costs, capital expansion, and most recently, MS4, the regulatory requirements. So these are things to consider if you're, if you're thinking about a stormwater utility. And I wanted to have one specific slide just about equity because like you do with water, like you do with wastewater, even electric utilities, right? It takes an investment in revenue because you've got expenses. And where, where does the revenue come from to construct storm drainage infrastructure? How do you maintain it? More and more communities, whether they're doing it because they, they see the MS4 requirements coming on them in the future, and they know they're going to have to do some of these things, or they've just recognized, we have a lot of needs. We need to look at, at alternative funding sources that are fair, that aren't just arbitrary and capricious of saying, we're just going to pick a number out and, you know, this is going to be on your, your utility bill to fund these projects. And how do you do that? Well, there are, there are different runoff weighting factors, if you will. And I've got two, two images on the screen right now. The one on my left is a large unnamed retail store. And the area in gray you can see is, and these are not in Brandon, so I'm not protecting anybody. The areas in gray are the impervious areas. That's all the land on their property where when water hits it, it runs off. That's the parking lot, that's the rooftop, that is the driveways, and even some of the loading areas. So that's about seventy-seven percent of that property is impervious area. So that's about 77% of that property is impervious area. The photo, air photo on the left is just a typical single-family resident, residents. You can see the rooftop, the garage, the driveway, and that's more like 38%. So like twice amount, twice the amount of impervious area on commercial properties as residential. So to be fair, if you're charging, because you can't really meter stormwater, and it's not like water where we know exactly how much you use. Typically, this is done through land use, different land uses have different runoff weighting factors and, and therefore there's different ways of calculating what a stormwater fee can be. But it's based on land use, it's based on impervious area, it's based on known, known runoff weighting factors. This is very, uh, very common in terms of how communities look at, at creating stormwater utilities and, and establishing stormwater fees. But it goes back to my last slide about being equitable, right? So we want to do this in a, in a fair manner to everyone. And because we like to compare ourselves, uh, I just put up two slides and, and these are actually taken from our, uh, annual utility rate survey in South Dakota, North Dakota. And these are just the, the communities over 10,000, or excuse me, over 5,000. So there are some that are low and there are some that are high. Typically, that's because as, you know, we've all experienced and, and talked about lately with our other utilities, to make a lot of investments, if you're making a lot of investments in your infrastructure and you have to pay for it through rates, um, that's how these really get established is what are the capital and operating needs and developing fees that are, um, are fair and equitable and yet recapture those expenses through revenue? So in, in some communities, it's a $3 a month flat rate for single-family residences and then they calculate, um, industrial and commercial properties, each one separately. It's easier to administer that way and yet still, um, is, is relatively fair. So these are just some, some different ways of not just preparing for the future because we know these administrative things are coming down the road, but also some things I, I think for the city of Brandon to consider, um, you know, how are you going to pay for these things? That we know the general fund has X amount of dollars in it that are available any given year for maintenance, operation, and also for, you know, capital improvements through sales taxes. Well, I'll just leave you with this, is that many communities, and if I showed you the cit, the state of, of, uh, Minnesota, there are two and a half pages of communities that have established stormwater utilities, partly because Minnesota has more strict, uh, environmental guidelines through the MPCA, but also because, um, you know, it, it's a concept that is, I'd say, working its way towards the Midwest. Some communities like Sioux Falls have had a, a storm fee, storm drainage fee in place since the early 1980s. Um, other communities are just getting around to it, but you know, again, it, it's an opportunity or a potential way to consider funding storm drainage improvements for the future.
Chad?
So next steps, um, like I said, you're already doing a lot of this, even as we were putting together the planning document, as we were, um, identifying issues or needed changes, those were already being implemented. So we have, uh, the list of projects, you're going through CIP process with other departments, other needs, and so continue to integrate that CIP, um, delve into it a little bit more with the decision matrix, and you kind of have to do that with all the other different, uh, departments, uh, to help prioritize those projects, uh, identify your funding, uh, sources. Uh, drainage ordinances and processes, like I said, we were kind of updating those as we went. Obviously, those are always changing and you have to stay on top of that. Um, preparing for that MS4, uh, and the LID implementation, uh, you guys have detention requirements and BMP requirements, that's a portion of it. This is really more the administrative, uh, preparing for that. And then policy meetings, you guys will have to digest, obviously, a lot of this. It's a large document and we're trying to give you the Cliff Notes version. But there's, there's a lot of review there, discussions on, uh, policy-type decisions, whether it's rates or what, what the case may be. So I'll leave it to the three of us. We took 15 minutes and really blew that out the door, so apologize for, it's a large document, there's a lot to it. Uh, if you guys have any questions, we can entertain those.
Questions?
Too much information.
Chad, did you guys, as a group with the administration or anything, discuss, uh, the revenue generating timelines or anything like that?
A lot of that would play back into the fee structure. So we're laying out those options. That would be more, I think, for you guys to kind of discuss and, uh, determine what direction you want to go there. But we, within that document, we, we lay out some options there.
Administration have some comments, what you were thinking?
Yeah, so, um, we did put in the budget for next year to do a stormwater utility rate study. So we could plug in all the CIPs, uh, list, once we get there, once we go through all of them and prioritize, we'll plug all those in, look at the maintenance, see what's going to be required for MS4, and how far we want to take that, and then we can start figuring out how we're gonna put together that utility fee. So that is one of our projects for next year, and we're hoping to implement that by July 1st.
Any other questions, council?
Did you have any budget numbers in that document? I'm assuming there is somewhere.
For that next utility rate?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's about 60,000 if I remember right, that's what we put in there for it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Fortunately or unfortunately, I don't know, people, it's, it's become, it's becoming a big deal, uh, wastewater runoff and, and it's gonna affect Brandon in her future. Definitely gonna have to be dealing with it. Next item is, uh, can I have a motion to approve the second reading of Ordinance 614, amending the 2020 budget? A motion of second to approve the second reading of Ordinance 614, amending the 2020 budget. Any questions on that? Christina reviewed it last time. Hearing no questions, Christina?
Clark? David? Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is a second reading, reading of Ordinance 615, rezoning of Lot 6, Block 2 of the Heartland Business Park. Can I have a motion? Motion of second to approve the second reading of Ordinance 615. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, Christina?
Clark? David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Lastly, we have a second reading of Ordinance 616, the rezoning of the railroad right-of-way property, lengthy description, uh, there if I could have a motion? Motion of second to approve the, or, second reading of Ordinance 616. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, Christina?
Clark? David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries. Moving on to the committee reports, the golf course, we have a management services request for proposals presented by the administration. If I get a motion to approve is presented? Motion of second to approve the management services RFP as presented. Any questions from the council?
Could we just, can I ask, uh, Mr. Rust a question? Quick? Thank you so much for coming, that's very generous of you. I guess I just wanted to, just a, ask a quick question because I know not every resident in Brandon thinks it's a good idea. I mean, this topic's come up a lot over the years. But having sat in on the committee last year, I think it's a no-brainer for us to, to look at it, but just to maybe put like some ideas out there of what Sioux Falls saw or why you guys did it or what difference it made for you. And I know we're not the same, but maybe to like help, um, residents understand why it's important to look at this.
Well, I, I'll start by saying anytime there's change, there's always some nervousness about this. And I, and again, we felt the same way and, and, uh, when Sioux Falls went through it, we felt a little bit of pressure too. So the company we had to bring in had to bring their A-game. And so we found a pretty good company and brought their A-game. And, and, uh, overall, um, revenues have increased. Just an idea, um, right now, we're about 300,000 over 2019, um, and we're about 188,000 above our budget. So it's been an amazing golfing year. Last year, given the fact that, you know, it was such a rainy year, we still made money. You know, the city made money. So, um, it's good. The, the comments we get back, um, from the golfers is that they've never seen the courses in such great shape. Um, so again, those are things that, you know, I'm not saying that our, our courses are bad here, our course is bad, it's just that they elevated it up. They've just looked at all, they, they took the, they basically took the cobwebs out of the corners and they made it look a lot better and the greens are playing great and, you know, everybody's just happy. So, um, the other thing I think that, um, you will see is that they'll utilize the clubhouse a lot more. That was something that, um, we noticed right away as the food and beverage program ended up getting, um, a lot better. We saw utilization, um, rate of how we can make, uh, you know, paninis and sandwiches and increase that revenue because we saw that as an, uh, area of opportunity. And so that has worked. Pro shop sales have gone up, you know, so there's a lot of good things that have happened there. If you guys, uh, heard of a, an event that we, that they put on, it was, I think it was Bogies and Brews. It was a golf tournament, sold out in hours. Uh, I think they could have sold out three or four of them, uh, you know, so they, they have a lot of cool ideas. And, uh, you know, one of the things that, just besides the cool ideas, but you have the backing of a corporate organization. And that backing, you know, has, um, you know, when it comes to purchasing equipment, when it comes to buying chemicals, when it comes to hiring staff and all that sort of stuff, um, again, they, they have those, um, that expertise, I guess. So, um, that's what comes along with a management company. They do it very successfully. They don't do it to lose money, they do it to make money. So again, uh, it's a small fee we pay, but again, I, the revenues couldn't be any better.
Any other questions? Scott or anybody else? Christina?
Clark? David? Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries. Second item under the golf course is we have a equipment lease, uh, presentation or proposal to lease, I think a total of about 12 pieces of equipment, mowers, ATV, rollers, sprayers, blowers. The proposal, the total cost of the lease is $69,547 a year for five years for a total of $347,735. If I could have a motion to approve that lease arrangement? There's a motion of second to approve the lease agreement as presented, the amount of $69,547 a year. Questions from the council?
I guess the only question I would have would be on the heels of doing an RFP and knowing that there's the potential for the purchasing power to be out there by a management firm. Could they get this substantially lower for us if we end up having a management?
I don't see him getting it any more reasonable than us. Sorry. I don't see him getting it, you know, with a government contract. They can't buy it any less than we can, so.
And I will say too, um, and with RFP going out, we can't just stop what we're doing, we have to keep moving forward. This is, these are things we need. We got the other half of this five years ago. When Kelly got here five years ago, the equipment was in pretty rough shape, and we're trying to catch up. And we have a 20-year plan that you will see next week, um, that this gets us on track for that.
Any other questions from the council? Christina?
Clark? Aye. David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to public safety, we have a wage adjustment for, for Kyle Zigon? Zigan? Thank you. To $22.19 an hour? Motion of second to approve the wage adjustment for Kyle Zigan to $22.19 an hour. Any questions? Christina?
Clark? David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries. Next, we have a request from the VFW to have a holiday parade of lights parade. Can I have a motion to approve that? Motion of second to approve the request from the VFW for a holiday parade of lights parade. Any questions from the council? Comments from the administration? Any questions, problems?
No, pretty, pretty routine, uh, very similar to the, uh, other parades the VFW does.
Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries, thank you. Item C3, we have a proposal to purchase TASER equipment for the police department. It's a proposal to basically lease for five annual payments of $4,320 a year for a total of $21,600. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion of second to approve the TASER equipment the police department has presented. Any questions from the council?
We're gonna forego the demonstration then?
They use Velcro now.
Any other, any questions? Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have a proposal to purchase a 2021 Ford Explorer for $37,952 from Lam Motors. If I could have a motion? Motion of second to approve the purchase from Lam Motors for a Ford Explorer, $37,952. Questions from the council? Hearing none, Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Motion carries, thank you. Under administration, we have a proposal for a 2020 Christmas party. I have a motion to approve.
I would actually make a motion that we forego this year and use the money that was going to be spent for the party in gift cards for staff. I just feel like it's, uh, not a good time, um, for the city to be all congregating their departments and spouses and council and council spouses with the rise in, in COVID cases.
And I would second that.
So a motion of second to forego the 2020 Christmas party, uh, for the city of Brandon. Any questions or comments from the council?
Can we put in there that we want the money used for some kind of Christmas bonus?
It was in the motion.
Okay, it was in the motion, so we can do that. Okay, good.
And the estimate here is, is about $4,000, correct? And we have roughly how many employees?
36. 36 full-time.
Would it be, uh, okay with you to just amend your motion to call it a hundred dollars even for employee? Thirty, oh yeah, yeah, 36. Yeah, my math, my math, my math is a little backwards.
Shorten it to 11 dollars.
Oh, no, no, no.
Any other questions?
There's not an issue.
Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you. Under Water and Sewer, we have an authorization to go to bids for the water tower project. Have a motion approved? Motion of second to authorize the administration to go to bids for a water tower project to be opened on November 20th, 2020. Questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Motion carries, thank you. Item F2, we have two change orders. Change order number four on the Main Avenue Sewer Project is a deduct of $5,862, and change order number five is an addition of $7,740. If I could have a motion to approve both of those change orders? Motion of second to approve change orders number four and five on the Main Avenue Sewer Project as presented. Any questions?
It's getting really close. This week will be done.
Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you. Any new business from council? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn at 6:51. Motion of second to adjourn at 6:51. Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone, have a good week.
I made the motion second to adjourn.
Clark, David?